Everyone, please find a seat. Hello, everyone. Welcome to today's Highway New York City Council Hearing of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. At this moment, please place all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chairs, we're ready to begin.
Good morning. My name is Marjorie Velazquez, and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. Today, I am joined by my colleagues on the committee, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Botcher, Councilmember Abreu. Intro 559, sponsored by myself, aims to restrict the provision of plastic eating utensils, condiment packets, and extra eating containers by food service establishments. Single-use plastics are the epitome of modern convenience. They are cheap to produce, lightweight, durable, and easy to dispose of. But this convenience comes at a cost. Once discarded, plastics take decades or even centuries to break down, polluting waterways, killing wildlife, and even ending up in our own bodies. It is estimated that about eight million tons of plastic leak into the ocean each year. That is equivalent to dumping a full garbage truck into the ocean every minute. There's so much plastic in the ocean that it's formed a landmass known as the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, floating between the coasts of California and Hawaii. Ninety-nine percent of this patch, which is twice the size of Texas, is made of plastic. The problem's only getting worse, as the use of plastics is expected to double over the next two decades. If we maintain business as usual, the World Economic Forum expects that there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish by 2050. Although recycling provides an avenue to redirect plastic waste from landfills and oceans, it is nowhere near a sufficient solution. Nationally, the plastic recycling rate has hovered at just nine percent since 2012. And even if that rate increases, there is a high chance that plastic will end up in landfills or oceans anyway. Recyclables must be properly cleaned and sorted, or they contaminate the entire stream and must be thrown away. In addition, the U.S. does not have the capacity to process the high volume of plastic waste Americans produce and ships more than one million tons of plastics offshore for recycling annually. Unfortunately, destination countries such as Malaysia, Indonesia, and Vietnam have been found to improperly manage their own waste. Plastic used councils pose a particular challenge. In the U.S., over a hundred million plastic utensils are used daily, and some analysts estimate that Americans waste forty billion plastic utensils per year. Forty billion. Small items such as cutlery and condiment packages are often missed by machines that process recyclables, and they are particularly damaging to wildlife. The Ocean Conservancy lists cutlery as the most deadly items to sea turtles, birds, and mammals. This bill, Intro 559, would prevent food establishments and meal delivery service providers from automatically providing utensils, condiment packages, and extra containers to consumers. We expect that this bill will reduce the amount of unnecessary products that are simply thrown away. I look forward to hearing feedback from the wide range of witnesses today.
Good morning and welcome. My name is Sarah Swain, Council to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, and I will be moderating this hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that is joining us via Zoom that you will be on mute until you're called on to testify, at which point you will be asked to accept to be unmuted by the host. I will be calling on public witnesses to testify after the conclusion of the administration's testimony and council member questions, so please listen carefully for your name to be called. At this hearing, we will be inviting testimony from the Department of Sanitation, followed by testimony from the members of the public. Councilmembers, you will be called on for questions after the panel has completed their testimony. Please note, council members will have three minutes for questions, and we will be allowing it for a second round of questions if needed. We will now call on representatives of the administration to testify. We will be hearing testimony from Gregory Anderson, Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs and Strategic Initiatives at the Department of Sanitation, and Carlos Ortiz, Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs and Policy at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, will be available for questions. At this time, I will administer the affirmation. Administration panelists, please raise your right hand, and I will call on each of you to individually respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to council member questions? Deputy Commissioner Anderson?
I do.
Deputy Commissioner Ortiz?
I do.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Deputy Commissioner Anderson to present his testimony.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Velazquez and members of the City Council Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. I am Gregory Anderson, Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Strategic Initiatives at the Department of Sanitation, and I'm joined by Carlos Ortiz, Assistant Commissioner for External Affairs at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Intro 559. New York City has long been a leader in the fight to reduce the use of single-use products, especially plastics. The city has repeatedly taken bold action on these products, many of which are difficult to recycle and are manufactured from fossil fuels. These efforts are an important part of our overall efforts to fight climate change, reduce carbon emissions, and divert waste from landfills. Single-use products of all kinds, including plastics, create unnecessary waste, and more importantly, they contribute to the scourge of litter that DSNY fights every single day. In 2019, New York City banned foam food service products and packing peanuts, the result of a detailed analysis of the recyclability of these products that determined that they cannot be recycled in an economical and sustainable manner. New York City also played a critical role in supporting state efforts to ban single-use plastic carryout bags and establish a fee on paper carryout bags. DSNY is currently conducting a detailed waste characterization study, which will assess the changes in the composition of our waste as a result of these efforts over the past several years. We have completed the first of three seasons of sorting as part of that study and look forward to sharing the results with the council in early 2024. Now, turning to 559, this bill would require food service establishments to provide, to only provide, single-use items upon request for either takeout or delivery. These items include forks, spoons, knives, chopsticks, plates, bowls, cups, and lids, and the bill would also require food service establishments to only provide condiment packets and napkins on request as well. While these products make up a small share of the city's overall waste stream, this is an important symbolic and principled step toward giving consumers and New Yorkers more agency in reducing their own personal waste impact. While these products, sorry, repeat that paragraph, I'm sure we have all ordered takeout or delivery and received unnecessary and unwanted plastic utensils, often also wrapped in film plastic and packets of condiments, and many of us probably have that drawer in our kitchen where we throw them in shamefully after we don't use them. This bill would give customers the choice of whether to receive these products with their takeout or delivery food order, eliminating waste and potentially reducing costs for businesses as well. DSNY and the administration support this important legislation. We look forward to working with the city council to enact it. Reducing the use of single-use products is an important part of achieving our waste diversion goals. This approach reduces our overall waste stream and encourages New Yorkers to use and reuse more sustainable alternatives. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to the Chair for questions.
I want to recognize Councilmember Ose, who has joined us. So we have several questions. The first is, single-use plastics are recyclable. Does the administration have an estimate of the percentage of single-use plastic waste that is recycled in New York City?
Sure. So in New York City, we can recycle all rigid plastic products. So that's, you know, anything that's, you know, that isn't sort of a film plastic or a foam plastic. And we've been recycling all rigid plastics since around 2013, I believe. I don't have a number directly in front of me as far as how, what share of single-use plastics are recycled versus end up in the trash. That's something that we determine on a regular basis as part of our waste characterization study. And as I mentioned in my testimony, we're conducting the updated study right now, actually, so that will assess changes in our waste stream as a result of things that we've done over the, over the last several years, the foam ban, the ban on plastic bags, the regulations on straws. So we look forward to completing that study next year and submitting it to the council in early '24. But I can follow up with the specific numbers for you.
Please do. Thank you. The 2017 waste study found that the vast majority of single-use plastic plates, cups, and cutlery are not recycled. What is that?
Sorry, I'm just writing down the note on your last one.
No worries.
So I think, you know, recycling, recycling, obviously, in New York City, we have, in general, a 50% capture rate. That means of everything that could be recycled, 50% of it is ending up in the recycling stream today. The most, the most commonly recycled products are things that, you know, people have been thinking of as recyclable for decades: aluminum cans, glass bottles, plastic bottles, newspapers, cardboard. For, for categories of things like single-use plastic items, some of those were added as part of that expansion of mixed-rigid plastics in 2013. And so part of it is, you know, New Yorkers are still getting used to it. Part of it is, you know, they're, they're, you know, smaller things. You, you don't really think about them when you use them and throw them away. That's part of the reason this bill is so important, because it makes consumers stop and think about the products that they're using before they decide to use them.
Does the department conduct outreach and education in order to increase the recycling rates of single-use plastics?
Yeah, that's part of our overall outreach and education on our waste diversion and recycling programs.
What is needed to improve recycling rates across the city?
I think, you know, there's, there's a few items there. Obviously, you know, we continue to do outreach and education on recycling to New Yorkers through a variety of media. One of the most important steps that we can take to improve our recycling program is actually something that we are working on at the state level, which is extended producer responsibility for packaging and paper products. And, and what that bill would do is basically take the onus of dealing with end-of-life for packaging and paper products, move it back to the manufacturers and retailers that are responsible for creating and selling those products, both to encourage recycling and to create a, a level of financial responsibility for that end of life. So that's one of the most important things that we are trying to advance right now. That would provide substantial funding for municipalities across the state, including New York City, to be able to expand our, our outreach, our efforts, our education efforts, our marketing campaigns around recycling. And we think that's, that's a, an important step in that direction.
I want to recognize Councilmember Farias, who has joined us today. What kind of outreach and education will the administration conduct to ensure food service establishments, third-party food delivery services, and third-party courier services comply with Intro 559?
Yeah, so I think we'll, we would take, you know, a few different approaches to that. First, as part of our overall commercial outreach efforts that we're, we're in the process of ramping up in advance of the implementation of commercial waste zones, we would add this to those conversations. So we are regularly going to meet with businesses either on commercial corridors, in merchants' associations, bids, whatever forum we can, we can sort of find them, to talk about regulations like commercial organics, commercial recycling, the straws bill, some of the other bans that I mentioned earlier, and also just talk about sanitation and the importance of, of sanitation and keeping our city clean in general. So that's something that we've been increasing over the course of the last two years and will continue to increase over the, the next two or three years as we implement commercial waste zones. We also do a lot of print mailers, social media advertising, and would incorporate this into that practice as well. We work very closely with SBS to design those outreach materials to make sure that we're reaching businesses in the language that, that they prefer. We're reaching them in the, in the sort of forum that, that is easiest for them to, to communicate in, and really making it as simple as possible for businesses to understand what their obligations are, comply with it, so that way we don't have to do any enforcement.
What languages will the outreach and education will be available?
Yeah, so for the, the straws bill, we just sent out a mailer in late October, and that mailer, the mailer itself was in three primary languages. But then we also have all of those materials available, I think, in seventeen total languages on our website. And, and our outreach staff also have access to Language Line and other translation services to be able to communicate with folks as they're going around doing in-person outreach.
Cool. Local law 64 of 2021 restricts single-use plastic straws, beverage splashsticks, and stirrers. What challenges has the department faced enforcing that local law?
Yeah, so I think, you know, that law, I think, while well-intentioned, is very complicated. There's a lot of provisions in there. There's a lot of restrictions around who can offer, excuse me, who can offer what kind of straw at what point, and who must offer plastic straws. We sort of boil it down into three primary responsibilities that businesses have related to that bill. One, you can't provide plastic straws unless a customer requests it. Two, if a customer requests it, you must provide a plastic straw, and that's because there are individuals and people with disabilities who require a plastic straw to consume certain foods and beverages. And number three, you can't provide any plastic stirrers or splashsticks. So in our communications with businesses, we really boil it down to those three topics. And actually, in the, the Small Business Forward legislation that was introduced earlier this month, we're actually proposing with council some language that will clarify the requirements of that bill to sort of simplify it into those, those most important components. So that's, that's the thing that we've sort of seen in working with businesses on that law, and I think once we have those changes in place, it'll be much easier for folks to understand.
In light of local laws like 64, does the department actually have concerns about enforcing Intro 559?
I don't think we have, we have concerns about it. Obviously, our, our intent is to do significant outreach and education first. The, the bill anticipates that, and I think we would, you know, very much work with our partners at DCWP, SBS, DOH, who are having regular contacts with businesses to make sure they understand the requirements of this. You know, our, our goal is never to, to issue a ticket sort of as the first course of action for, for something like this. But, you know, we will, if necessary, to, to take corrective action where businesses are, you know, flagrantly violating or, or openly violating the law.
I will turn it over to Councilmember Botcher, who has some questions.
Thank you. I really want to thank Councilmember Velazquez for your leadership on this issue, and I really want to thank all of the advocates who are here today and everyone who's been working on this issue for years to get us to this moment. Question, Intro 559 will require the department to assess the number of single-use items in the waste stream as part of the department's waste containerization study and compare it to previous years. Can you explain to us how that would work, how you assess the presence of single-use plastic in the waste stream, and, and if you think you'll be able to produce a comparison that will show progress as a result of this legislation?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember. So as, so every about five or six years, we do a waste characterization study, and that study is, is incredibly rigorous. We take hundreds of samples of every waste stream from across the five boroughs. We actually have, have staff and contractors who then sort those samples into as many as 250 to 350 different categories. And it's, it's a very laborious process. It's one that takes a lot of time to complete, which is why the next study will, will be complete in early 2024. But it's, it's really useful at understanding what's in our waste stream and how those things have changed. So in the, the new study, which we completed the first of three sorting seasons this month, we will be able to see changes in things like foam products, single-use carryout bags, straws, and other single-use items since that 2017 study. And the 2017 study predates all of those regulations going into effect, so it's going to be a really good sort of before-and-after picture of how much of those products are in our waste stream. We're also, in, in the current study, taking an even more rigorous approach than we have in the past, so increasing the number of sort categories from around 235 to close to 350. And we can provide the full list of, of those sort categories for you if you'd like. We're also ensuring that the sampling is, is statistically representative on a few different bases, so looking not only at housing density and how that may affect recycling rates and waste composition, but also looking at, at things like median income levels in, in various neighborhoods and looking at that as a driver of, of waste composition. So I think this will be, you know, probably the most rigorous study that we've done, I think, at least since 2005, the study that was done before the last Solid Waste Management Plan. And the goal here is for this study to sort of lay the groundwork for our next solid waste management plan, which is due in 2026 and will sort of be our, our strategic plan for waste management over the course of the next decade.
Thank you. Oh, great. Somewhat unrelated, but very related to what we're talking about, because we're talking about enforcement of this law. I want to ask about the enforcement of the plastic bag law, which, from what I understand, is primarily DEC is, is responsible for enforcing that. But I wanted to ask about, as the Department of Sanitation, your, your role and, and your view on the plastic bag law, because as we know, we hear a lot about the plastic bags still being given out in, in delis and, and all kinds of places. Is the department making any efforts to assist with the enforcement of the plastic bag law?
Yeah, so two things there. First, the state plastic bag law, while it covers almost all retail stores, does not cover food takeout. So there are some cases under the state plastic bag law where plastic carryout bags are still allowed. So anytime you're taking out prepared food either from a deli or a restaurant, or if that food's being delivered from a deli or a restaurant, that's actually, you know, a totally legal use of plastic bags. I think that's something we're open to revisiting with the state legislature in addition to other, other components of the bill. On the enforcement side, it's not that DEC is primarily doing enforcement. They are the only authority that's allowed to do enforcement. The city is, is entirely preempted from any enforcement or regulation regarding the plastic bag ban. We think it's, you know, that's, it's a very frustrating situation to be in. We have enforcement staff on the ground in New York City who could do this enforcement and are not authorized to, so we would love to work with the state legislature to revisit that, not only for the state plastic bag ban, but also other laws like the rechargeable battery take-back law, which the city is also preempted from enforcing. Just, you know, DEC has a very, very broad mandate as far as, you know, the, the various things they do across the state. I don't, I don't know that, that being able to enforce plastic bag, the plastic bag ban in New York City is at the top of their list, and so we'd love to help them out if we were authorized to.
Do you have any conversations surrounding allowing municipalities to enforce the, the plastic bag ban?
We've made recommendations along those lines to the state legislature. Obviously, they're gearing up for their next session starting in January, so we look forward to continuing those conversations in, in the future, and, you know, would love city council's advocacy as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ose?
Good morning, and thank you, Chair Velazquez. I appreciate you guys for providing info on how outreach will be done to businesses and restaurants, but I'm curious to know if any outreach is going to be done to customers themselves in terms of, if this bill does pass, will they be aware of this option or this, this change in how we do business in the city?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Councilmember, and, and our, our first priority is, is the outreach and communications to the businesses, because they would be the ones subject to enforcement, and we want to ensure that they understand what they're required to do. But certainly, consumer education is an important part of that, and, you know, that's something that I think we do in a slightly more broad-based way, through social media, through traditional media and, and, you know, news outlets. But we would be happy to work with the city council to think through what would be appropriate there and what level of funding would be necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We will give the administration an opportunity to collect their things, and we will turn to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that unlike our typical council hearings, we will be calling individuals one by one to testify online. If you're here in person, please come up and take a seat at the table, and you may begin once the sergeant has notified you that time has started. You will have two minutes to testify, so please begin once time starts. Councilmembers who have questions for a particular panelist should let me know, and I will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. For panelists on Zoom, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. For those testifying in person, please make sure to press the button on the microphone, and the red light goes on so that we can hear your testimony. In person, I'll be calling panelists in groups of four. I know there's probably only room for two, but there are two chairs behind the panel. Our first panel is going to be virtual. I'm going to be calling, welcoming Rhonda Kaiser to testify. After that, I will be welcoming Mark Dunleah, and then Alexis Goldsmith.
Thank you, Chair Velazquez, and members of the committee. We are fifth graders from PSMS 188 at Island School in the Lower East Side in Manhattan.
Thank you for letting us testify today about Intro 559, the Skip the Stuff Bill.
We are working with capacity of pressure to reduce single-use plastic everywhere, starting in the city of Chicago.
We know that single-use plastic hurts people who live in plastic factories, transportation routes, landfills, and the city. And plastic litter is annoying, just a problem on the streets everywhere.
It gets into our waterways and hurts fish and turtles and other animals. We know that plastic food packaging costs money to make and to give out.
And we know that plastic also costs our health, make, and disposal.
We learn that the plastic we all use every day is costing us a lot with our money and our, and we want it to return to the ground.
Captain Period Culture helped us collect our own data to tell our own story about the plastic that we lose in our day.
We learned that about two pieces of plastic per lunch are served in university schools every day.
But those two pieces of plastic multiplied by the one million lunches served the food that we need a little solution to reduce school lunch plastic. So we asked the school four people to try serving lunch with any single-use plastic. And they said, yeah, we use city schools now for plastic-free lunch, one day a month.
Guess what? Our plastic-free lunch day, utensils are served by the class of sun flu. Now that we know it's possible to reduce school lunch plastic.
We know it's possible to reduce plastic everywhere just by taking only what we eat. Let's please pass Intro 559 with the stuff. This will help restaurants save their money
by giving out less plastic, and we can save our health by making and disposing of plastic.
Thank you!
Oh, my God. I love you guys, and thank you. This is why we do what we do, and it's just an honor for you guys to participate, and thank you. Are you guys having a good day? Thank you for speaking up for us. Thank you all. Let's get you registered and on the community boards immediately.
Okay. Our next panelist will be Mark Dunleah. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant starts the clock.
Starting time.
My name is Mark Dunle, and I'm chairperson of the Green Education and Legal Fund. I'm also co-chair of the EcoAction Committee of the Green Party of the United States. I own an apartment at 315 Green Avenue in Brooklyn, which is part of District 35. I was one of the initial organizers of the plastic bag issue in New York City, helping to organize the first large community meeting in Park Slope with then-city councilmember Brad Lander. GEL supports Skip the Stuff Gell supports skip the stuff bill is the next step after the ban on plastic bags, which unfortunately needs to be enforced in New York City and to make straws upon request. This bill will not only reduce needless waste, it will save restaurants money and give consumers more choice. The bill would give New York City a permanent fix that will ensure all takeout and orders provide what a customer needs. The bill will require restaurants to provide disposable takeout utensil, snack bins and condiments only when requested. Most of these single use items don't even get used before they're thrown out. Most food delivery goes to people in their own homes where we have our own utensils. New York City has a mandate of zero waste to landfills by two thousand and thirty, but it won't meet that target without dramatically reducing disposable items like the ones covered by this bill. Reduce in the production and use of plastic helps lower greenhouse gas emissions, which are fueling the climate crisis. Plastics are made from fossil fuels, including fracked gas, which poison the communities near their, the extraction. The refineries that make plastic are toxic and unjust as they usually are cited in disadvantaged communities. Small, single use utensils are not to be captured or not able to be captured with the city's existing recycling systems. This bill will save restaurants money by reducing the amount of single use stuff they have to buy. Los Angeles recently passed a similar law and restaurants there are saving five dollars per year. And I submitted recent testimony for additional points.
Any questions? Thank you. The next panelist will be Alexis Goldsmith. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant starts the clock.
Starting time.
Good morning. My name is Alexis Goldsmith and I am the organizing director at Beyond Plastics. We are a national nonprofit project dedicated to ending plastic pollution. And we support intro oh five five nine, the skip the stuff, because this bill would give New York a permanent fix to ensure that all takeout and delivery orders provide only what a customer needs. Echoing what Mark said, the three major benefits of this bill would save restaurants money, give consumers more choice, and reduce waste and climate emissions. And of course, also there's an environmental justice aspect of this bill, given that plastics are made from fossil fuels and the production of plastics is cited in low income and low income communities of color across the United States and also where the waste goes tends to affect low income communities as well. Just to note that single use plastic utensils and containers are not effectively recycled. The, in the U S as a nation, our recycling rate for plastics hovers at just five percent. That's according to the Department of Energy. And this is not the fault of recyclers or of the department, but rather that these products are not designed to be recycled. So intro oh five five nine is already a good bill. If there is an opportunity to make changes, we have just a couple of suggestions that would make it even better. And my written testimony includes specific bill language. One, that the department incorporate compliance checks into routine restaurant inspections. And two, add a provision that would allow the public to report violations similar to New York State's plastic bag ban. I was glad to hear that the department has a robust education and outreach plan for the education materials and that they've taken lessons learned from the straws upon request law. It's exactly what I would do if I was in their position. So bottom line, New York City will, restaurants will save money, reduce emissions and prevent mountains of trash with this straightforward
Has expired.
to reduce plastic waste at the source.
Any questions? Thank you. The next panel will be in person. I will call the four panelists names. The first two can take seats at the table and the second two can sit, sit behind. Megan Ortiz, Rebecca Sabnum, Lacey Talber and Christopher Durasimi.
I want to recognize council member Nerza has joined us.
Panelist Megan Ortiz, you may begin your testimony when the sergeant starts the clock.
Hello. Oh. Hello. It's very nice to meet you. Good afternoon Chairwoman Velazquez and members of the Consumer and Worker Protection Committee. I'm Megan Ortiz. I live in Harlem and I'm currently working in a restaurant at the Grand Central Terminal. I'm a cafeteria culture youth advocate and I'm testifying to urge the New York City Council to pass the skip the bill, skip the stuff bill. And I've prepared a spoken word poem. And, okay. One hundred and fourteen. That's how much a box of disposable, biodegradable disposable forks cost. How I know this, this is the exact number my general manager mumbles behind me when forks suddenly go missing. Forks that somehow find their way to the trash before ever being used, biodegradable forks that find their way to landfills or waterways. A not so warm welcome to a single use item meant to replace plastic being treated like plastic. One time at work, I took the time to read the box the forks came in and twelve point five, I've read that a biodegradable fork is not to be thrown in regular trash as it produces methane gas when disposed of in this manner, effectively making it as harmful as a plastic fork. The air is heavy and it smells, but that's not a problem to the customers of my establishment. The smell will only be faint to them like it comes from some distant land. This smell however, however, will travel with me home like I am the proprietor of it. One fourteen is quite a hefty price to pay for a fork that makes you feel good without ever having to do good. This single use item appearing more like a decoration in a, in a paper bag compostable to help you sleep at night, maybe even breathe a little easier, believing in a good action without ever having to commit to one. One that may impede on your daily life. One that can be fixed by a simple question, a sign of acknowledgement. Can I please get a fork? One fourteen, a number that trails around my store like a ghost, repeated by my general manager and myself, albeit for different reasons. She has a budget to stay within and I'm wondering how much of an inconvenience a question can really be. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Sabnum, you may start when the sergeant tells you.
Good morning Chair Velazquez and members of the committee. Is it on? Okay. Good morning again. Chair Velazquez and members of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Rebecca Shabnom and I live in the East Village and currently am a student at Columbia University. I'm also a representative of cafeteria culture and I'm testifying to urge the New York City, City, New York City Council to pass the zero five five nine, the skip the stuff bill. I have worked in the restaurant industry like Megan and have also seen firsthand the amount of waste customers can produce simply when the option is given to them. These single use utensils are simply treated as accessories to their deliveries that get incorrectly discarded. We went through so many utensils that nobody ends up using, costing the restaurant a ton of money. I could stand here and regurgitate a bunch of facts to you like everyone else has about the entire life cycle of the single use plastic from start to finish and how it threatens our life and the environment around us, specifically how it disproportionately affects low income and communities of color. I could just tell you how plastic utensils consistently are reported as one of the top litters that are found in, in our environment worldwide. Or just like the general awful process of making plastic from fracked gas. But you all know this, you, this is like not anything like new to anybody else. These facts have been always made available to us and they've always been known. What I will leave you with are the wishes of fifth graders in the East Village community that I teach at the Lower East Side Girls Club. These, some girls have asked for justice for the environment and the community and less microplastics instead of other gifts this season. Others have asked for more love and hugs in the world. We will wait as the city decides if the convenience of utensils is worth more than the wishes of their own youth. Thank you for your time and I urge you to pass this bill for these fifth graders. Thank you.
Thank you. Lacey Talber, you may begin when the time starts.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Velazquez and members of the committee for taking the time today to hold this hearing. I'm representing Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso. As trash continues to pile up on our streets, we should not lose sight of our ambitious goal of sending zero waste to landfills by two thousand and thirty. Decreasing single use plastic waste would further our progress toward this goal while saving taxpayer money, saving our small businesses money and aiding our efforts to save the planet. Businesses in the U S spend about twenty billion dollars every year buying utensils, napkins, condiment packets and other items that are almost immediately thrown away. Last year, New York City spent four hundred and fifty two million dollars to send three point four million tons of household waste to landfills, of which approximately eighteen thousand tons was single use plastics. A two thousand and twenty one study by Beyond Plastics showed that the production and disposal of plastics is set to outpace coal in its contribution to climate change in the U S by two thousand and thirty. Given this, takeout and food delivery bags filled with single use items are not a simple convenience. Rather, they are a hindrance to reducing waste and taking aggressive action on climate change. The solution here is simple. Intro five five nine makes skipping the stuff the default, which makes sense particularly for customers eating takeout or delivery at home where presumably they have reusable items that won't end up directly in the trash. Importantly, having to choose to receive these items will make customers conscious of their decisions, which will help us chip away at a culture that consumes plastics without giving a second thought to need and impact. Whenever we suggest policy that could financially impact small businesses, we must be mindful to ensure that implementation includes extensive outreach, education and the opportunity to cure violations before financial penalties are issued. I would like to see more specifics in this legislation about that and am hopeful that on the whole, this bill will save New York City businesses much more money than it will cost them. About three thousand dollars per year per business and savings according to some estimates. We have already reduced our reliance on plastic bags and we must bring that same desire to changing our behavior regarding other single use plastics. Let's skip the stuff and put our environment first. Thank you again for holding this hearing today.
Thank you. Christopher Durasimi, you may start.
Thank you Chair Velazquez and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify today regarding intro five five nine. My name is Christopher Durasimi and I am the Director of Government Community Affairs for the Wildlife Conservation Society. Based in New York City at the Bronx Zoo since eighteen ninety five, WCS is a global conservation organization dedicated to saving wildlife and wild places through science, conservation action, education and inspiring people to value nature. We harness the network and power of our global conservation program across nearly sixty countries and all of the world's oceans to our five New York City based parks, including the Bronx Zoo, the New York Aquarium in Brooklyn, Prost Park Zoo, Queen Zoo and Central Park Zoo, which inspire four million visitors a year. Every day we're hearing new startling information about the impacts of plastic pollution. We don't have to say, it's been said many times. Our wildlife has been, you know, decimated. They mistake plastic for food, choke and plastic breaks down into smaller pieces, consume our wildlife and eventually threatens human health through seafood and drinking water. It's, we all know that by two thousand and fifty, there'll be more fish, there'd be more plastic than fish in our waters. This information is disheartening, but we're not sitting by. New York City is taking a leadership role thanks to the council's passage of intro nine thirty six last year, restricting single use plastic straws, stirs and splash sticks. However, we're still not free from the dangers of plastics, which is precisely why intro five five nine is important. The bill asks restaurants, food delivery apps and online delivery platforms to provide single use plastic utensils, napkins and condiments upon request. Simply changing the default app, option, we reduce unnecessary waste, save money for local businesses and help to clutter often unused plastic utensils from the homes of countless New Yorkers. This is, eliminating plastic is also not an impossible task. WCS has already eliminated plastic straws and bottles from all of our parks in New York City. Also, we have eliminated all single use plastic items, including cutlery and condiments at the New York Aquarium. New York City has a mandate of zero waste to land for about two thousand and thirty, but it will not meet this target without dramatically reducing disposable items like the ones covered by this bill. Through this bill, New York City can expand its leadership role in combating plastic pollution in New York's borders and beyond. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Our next panel will be virtual. I will first call on panelist Mary Arnold, then Joyce Bialik and last Sarah Grillo. Panelist Mary Arnold, you may begin when the sergeant starts the clock.
Time starts.
Good morning. My name is Mary Arnold. I'm the Queens Solid Waste Advisory Board Legislative Chair. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan and Queens Solid Waste Advisory Boards. All of New York City's Solid Waste Advisory Boards support intro zero five five nine. We thank the bill's sponsor Chair Marjorie Velazquez and the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection for their leadership on this common sense bill, which measurably moves the city towards zero waste to landfills and incinerators. Please get this bill passed in two thousand and twenty two. This bill will save restaurants money and reduce the scourge of plastic pollution in our communities. Plastics are made of fossil fuels. Their transport and disposal contribute to climate change and pollution. Petroleum and plastic manufacturing infrastructure is overwhelmingly located in communities of color and poor neighborhoods, which unjustly degrades the health of these, these New Yorkers. Single use plastic winds up in waterways. Single use plastic also winds up in landfills and incinerators, which are also overwhelmingly located in communities of color and poor neighborhoods. New York City's Solid Waste Advisory Boards resoundingly support the skip the stuff legislation and we look forward to seeing this legislation enacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have Joyce Bialik.
Time starts now.
Good morning, members of the public and council members. I'm testifying on behalf of the Microplastic Task Force of the Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board. And of course, we strongly support the skip the stuff bill. So it, the, this bill requires that food service establishments, couriers who deliver food and food service. Sorry. Food delivery platforms provide eating utensils, extra eating containers and condiment packets only if the customer requests them. So these are all macroplastics that if reduced, will lead to less creation of microplastics. So what are the cost benefits of such a law? The state of Washington, whose skip the stuff law recently passed, lists the following. Environmental costs from natural resource extraction, climate impacts and plastic pollution. Business costs to purchase and dispose of these items. Taxpayer costs in solid waste management and litter cleanup. Potential human health costs associated with PFATs, microplastics and other harmful substances in single use items. And then lost opportunity costs when we don't create more sustainable ways to meet our needs. So the environmental hazards of plastics and microplastics are widely known, but not as well known as their serious health hazards. In the context of the world, world gathering about a plastics treaty, Julia Corlini, who's a senior attorney writes, there is strong scientific census that plastics associated, plastics associated chemicals cause diseases. And she describes the disproportionate health effects on certain vulnerable populations.
Time expired.
Including children, youth, pregnant women and workers with unique, is my timer? With unique exposures. So there's no doubt that the practice of automatically including plastics with the order is detrimental to our health and the environment. Such plastics should be added only after learning if the customer wants them. Think of how much plastic lands in our waste stream when customers who don't want them get them anywhere. Way and it's about time we had a skip the stuff bill that will end the distribution of unwanted plastics. The state of Washington and tiny Ulster County, north of the city have such a bill. Why doesn't New York City? Let's get this legislation done. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next panelist will be Carolina Korth.
Oh my God, that's me.
Carolina.
Start. You can go ahead.
Hi, so sorry. I am currently in physical therapy right now, but I was not about to miss my opportunity to testify on this topic. We are so overdue for this legislation. I'm so glad that we're finally considering this. But this is something that, I mean, if you look at Canada, the entire nation banned six types of single use plastics just recently. They've banned them completely outright. It's not, you know, in other words to say, we've got a lot of work to do and this is a really good first step. It's not, you know, in other words, to say, we've got a lot of work to do, and this is a really good first step. I will say, as just a consumer who does not use meaningless, I will call restaurants directly so that they get all of my money or use their apps. I am always, absolutely always saying, no cutlery, no extras, no plastic. And pretty much 50% of the time, I still get it. And I will open my bag, go back to the business, and say, hey, I didn't want these. Here, take them. We can give them to someone else. I always get the response, sorry. It was just, it's out of habit. We need to break that habit. There is no need for most of us to be getting any sort of plastic, single-use items. So many of us are just getting our food to eat it at home where we have utensils. This is, and many of them are actually not even really recyclable because of the plastics that they're composed of, some of the single-use cutlery, for example. So, this is beyond something that needs to be passed. I hope this is just the first of many, many steps because we're in a climate crisis, and right now, fossil fuel companies are literally publishing information about how their future profits are going to be made from petroleum products because they know that oil and fossil fuels are going to be phased out in vehicles and transportation. That's really all I have to say. Thank you so much for your attention, for your time. Hello to some of my favorite council members. Hello, Julie Wong. And I really hope that you pass this without further ado, and that this is just the first of many steps. I hope we just ban single-use plastics outright, and I'll probably be bugging some--
Your time expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be in person. It will be Anita Chan, Sonya Chung, Eric Goldstein, and Alexis Hidalgo. The first two panelists can take chairs at the table. It's, yeah, what am I going to use for my verbal testimony? Anita Chan, you may begin your testimony when the sergeant starts the clock.
Good morning. My name is Anita Chan, and I'm a Long Island City resident and City Council District 26. I'm on the Queens Solid Waste Advisory Board and the Earth Matter New York Board and a member of the 350 Brooklyn Working Group Waste Not. So, I think about waste a lot. I am testifying on my own behalf today in support of passing the Skip the Stuff bill. While I am disappointed that I am doing this for a second time because the bill didn't pass last year, I am very relieved that the efforts did not die and that we have another opportunity to do the right thing and pass the Skip the Stuff bill. Most of us who order takeout or delivery probably have a collection of unused single-use utensils, condiment packets, and napkins that were automatically included in our order. In many cases, the food and drinks are consumed at home or other settings where supplies are already available. That is why it makes perfect sense to give single-use utensils, condiments, and napkins only upon request. The missions associated with the production, transportation, and disposal of single-use items, much of which is plastic, contributes to the climate crisis. This bill will help us reduce and hopefully transition to reuse in feasible situations. Currently, some ordering platforms give the option to opt out of receiving utensils, but more often than not, the request isn't honored. If Skip the Stuff is passed and enforced, businesses can save money and space from buying less inventory and not be afraid of being seen as having bad service by not providing these service items automatically. I want to thank everyone who has been working so hard on all of this and advocating for this bill. Let's not delay any further and get it passed this year.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sonya Chung, and I am a staff attorney in the Environmental Justice Program at New York Lurds for the Public Interest. Thank you to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection Chair Velazquez and Councilmember Nurse for the opportunity to testify in support of Intro 0559, Skip the Stuff bill. NLP's environmental justice program has advocated and litigated against inequitable distribution of environmental burdens in our city for decades and especially in the solid waste management system. The New York City's solid waste infrastructure is historically concentrated in a few low-income communities of color, and these environmental justice communities unwillingly bear the brunt of resulting poor air quality, unsafe traffic, noise, odors, vermin, with measurable repercussions for public health. For this reason, NLP enthusiastically supports Skip the Stuff bill as it will help reduce the massive amount of harmful plastic waste that New York City currently trucks to landfills and incinerators. And joining the chorus of folks who are testifying today, reducing waste, especially unnecessary and unwanted waste, is a critical part of easing the burden on environmental justice communities. This bill is also well-timed to help private waste haulers and businesses meet the city's waste reduction goals as New York City's landmark commercial waste zones law, Local Law 199 of 2019, is fully implemented next year. Skip the Stuff also advances climate justice and resilience. The pollution from plastic not only harms environmental justice communities where the plastic waste ends up, but also the communities where the plastic is produced. The petrochemical facilities manufacturing plastic pellets are overwhelmingly also cited in EJ communities where they pump toxic chemicals into the air as well as greenhouse gases. And this harms the community's health all while driving the demand for fossil fuels and exacerbating the climate crisis. Single-use plastics, for all their far-reaching and harmful impacts, should at minimum not be produced, to never be used, and immediately thrown away. We urge the council to vote to skip the stuff. This bill alongside many other comprehensive waste reform bills that are from or before this council will help New York City reach its waste reduction goals and, most importantly, alleviate the burden on environmental justice communities. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Do you have any concerns with this proposed legislation?
No, no concerns.
Thank you.
Hello? Is it on? Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Alexis Hidalgo with the New York League of Conservation Voters, and I'll be delivering this testimony on behalf of Alya Sumro, our deputy director. NYLCV is a statewide environmental advocacy organization representing over 30,000 members in New York City. Thank you, Chair Velazquez and members of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, for the opportunity to testify today. One of NYLCV's top policy goals is moving New York towards zero waste, and the easiest way to accomplish that is by creating less waste. We have become a disposable society over-reliant on single-use containers for our beverages or takeout, and even our utensils. NYLCV supports the passage of Intro 0559, sponsored by the chair, in order to reduce the excessive amount of single-use plastics that end up in the city's waste stream. Very often, these plastic items are completely unnecessary, leaving consumers with trash they didn't ask for. The mayor's office reported approximately 36 million pounds of single-use plastic foodware collected from our city's residential waste stream, and the city spends $42 million a year just to manage the waste from single-use cutlery. All of this processing and management just sends these items to landfills or incinerators. These facilities are then often located in low-income communities of color where the residents are already overburdened by poor air quality and other environmental injustices. None of these items are recyclable either, so they degrade into harmful microplastics that threaten wildlife and can end up in our water and food supply. The bill will encourage New Yorkers to reduce their reliance on single-use utensils and condiment packages. It will also decrease carbon emissions by decreasing the use of petroleum-produced plastics, bringing the city closer to reaching its emission reduction goals. It will reduce the amount of plastics polluting our waterways and environments. Finally, this is a step in the right direction towards achieving our goal of sending zero waste to landfills, a goal which we have made little to no progress towards over the last few years. This bill is a no-brainer. NYLCV urges you to co-sponsor Intro 0559 and vote yes on this bill, which will be included in our 2022 New York City Council scorecard. If this bill passes, it will help clean up New York City by skipping the stuff. Thank you.
Good morning. Eric Goldstein from the Natural Resources Defense Council. We thank you, Councilmember Velazquez, Councilmember Botcher, for your leadership on this bill. NRDC strongly supports Intro 559, and I'll summarize our written testimony. The legislation also has the strong support of the restaurant community, including the New York City Hospitality Alliance, and that's for a good reason. The legislation that was passed in California imposed similar provisions on takeout food, and there, the chief sponsor of the bill found that California restaurants were saving between $3,000 and $21,000 a year in reduced operating costs as a result of this legislation. The only opposition we know of to this bill would likely be from the fossil fuel industry. And with the amount of oil and gas for internal combustion engines likely to decrease over the next 15 years, its plastics, including throwaway plastics, which account for as much as 45% of the total plastics production, that is a major growth area for the fossil fuel industry. They are the folks who will be affected by this bill, and rightly so. This bill only deals with a small portion of the waste stream, and we hope that it's a start for the council to deal with some of the bigger waste issues, including universal curbside composting, which Sandy Nurse and Councilmember Hanif have been spearheading in the sanitation committee. One last point, Councilmember Velazquez. We appreciate your highlighting the importance of education and enforcement. Fortunately, this bill includes a provision that directs the Department of Consumer Affairs to ensure that education and outreach to inform New Yorkers takes place. But as the state's solid waste management plan indicates, progress in waste prevention requires behavioral change, and behavioral change requires education. And so, therefore, it will really be essential for the Department of Consumer Affairs and Department of Sanitation to ensure and that they follow through on this mandate for the bill to be successfully implemented. We appreciate your support. We look forward to the speaker advancing a vote on this bill before year's end, and we thank you for your attention.
In your testimony, you mentioned California. What types of restrictions were implemented in their laws, and what is the impact of that legislation?
California has a very similar statewide bill that directs localities to advance legislation on their own that would essentially set up plastic utensils on request. And so, a number of jurisdictions have already implemented that. And as I say, the prime sponsor of the Los Angeles implementing bill did a survey and found that restaurants were saving as much as $21,000 a year. And so, there was really broad support for that legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next panel will be virtual. I will first calling on panelist Brian Langloss, then Jane Selden, and then Sarah Hudson.
Time starts.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Velazquez and committee members, for the opportunity to testify in support of the Skip the Stuff ordinance. My name is Brian Langloss, and I'm with Oceana, the largest international advocacy organization dedicated solely to ocean conservation. As we've heard, plastic pollution is a growing problem for ocean health. Plastic pollution is a threat to the world's oceans as well as our food, human health, and our climate. Each year, an estimated 33 billion pounds of plastic enter the marine environment, and this is roughly equivalent to actually two garbage trucks full of plastic being dumped into the oceans every minute. Plastic pollution is everywhere. Scientists have observed plastic floating on the surface of the ocean in some of its most remote parts, washing up on the world's coastlines, melting in Arctic sea ice. It's been observed raining onto the Rocky Mountains and even sitting at the deepest part of the ocean floor. As plastics continue to flood into our oceans and other waterways, the list of species affected by plastic pollution expands. A piece of plastic can look like food to a fish, or a turtle, or dolphin, or bird. Tens of thousands of individual marine animals have been observed suffering from entanglement or ingestion of plastic. Plastic ingestion and entanglements can lead animals to die from starvation or suffocation. While we begin to realize the extent of plastic pollution's effects, plastic production continues to increase at a rapid rate. The plastics industry expects annual production will more than triple by 2050. And as plastic production, excuse me, as plastic production increases, so will the amount of plastic entering into our oceans. The solution is to reduce single-use plastics by making plastic utensils and condiment packets available by request only. Recycling is not enough to solve the plastic pollution crisis.
Time expired.
Only 9% of all the plastic waste ever produced has been recycled. And so, this is a problem we cannot recycle our way out of. We have to cut the pollution off at its source. Thank you very much for your work on this bill.
Thank you. The next panelist is Jane Selden.
Time starts.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jane Selden, and I'm testifying today on behalf of the climate activist group 350 NYC. We at 350 know that the world can't reach its greenhouse gas emissions goals without seriously addressing the environmental impact of plastic. Plastic production has grown exponentially in the last 20 years. In fact, if plastics were a country, it would be the fifth-largest emitter of greenhouse gases in the world. The sourcing, production, and disposal of plastic isn't only accelerating the climate crisis, but has a disproportionate impact on the health of low-income communities and communities of color who live near fracking sites, petrochemical plants, landfill, and incinerators. The most effective way to address the plastic pandemic is to reduce demand for it, which is why 350 NYC fully supports the Skip the Stuff bill. Like the plastic bag ban, the Skip the Straw law, Intro 559 targets single-use plastic, which comprises 40% of plastic produced each year. But actually, these plastic utensils don't even necessarily fit the definition of single-use since so often, they aren't used at all and just end up creating clutter in people's drawers. They're impossible to recycle, and if they do end up at a MRF facility, they can jam the machinery. And why would anyone want to use utensils made from material laced with unknown chemicals? The reality is, no one benefits from the proliferation of these plastic utensils except for the petrochemical industry. We know from a recent Ipsos poll commissioned by Oceana that the overwhelming majority of Americans, regardless of party affiliation, support legislation that reduces single-use plastic. And I'm sure city council members are aware that sanitation issues are among their constituents' top concerns. So, we urge the city council to pass the Skip the Stuff bill without delay and hope this bill paves the way for more waste reduction legislation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next panelist is Sarah Hudson.
Time starts.
Hello. My name is Sarah Ryan Hudson, and I am the Director of Advocacy for Gotham Whale. Gotham Whale is a New York City-based nonprofit that seeks to research, educate, and about, and advocate for the marine mammals in our area. Thank you for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to express our support for the Skip the Stuff bill. We're hopeful this bill will reduce the impact plastic pollution is having on our local marine ecosystem. Our organization partners with multiple local whale watches to collect data during the tours they offer. We're observing floating plastic debris on many of our trips. I personally have participated in coastal cleanups and seen firsthand just how much trash is ending up in our waterways. Though many people aren't aware of it, 27 marine mammal species have been observed in the New York bite. Over the last decade, Gotham Whale has tracked the sightings of marine mammals in our area. We have observed the growing number of humpbacks and other whales, dolphins, and seals coming to our area to feed. We frequently document humpbacks feeding with floating debris visible in the same area. Ingesting plastic waste is incredibly harmful to wildlife, and we're hopeful this bill will change the default from disposable to reusable and help New Yorkers be more mindful. As with many issues facing our marine wildlife, it's likely the impacts are undercounted. For each instance where an animal washes ashore showing signs of entanglement or debris ingestion, there may be dozens of other animals who suffer a similar fate out of sight and offshore. This bill will give New Yorkers better control over refusing single-use materials. The current default of adding condiments and plastic cutlery to every order puts the burden on the consumer to request no waste. In my personal experience, this request is frequently overlooked or ignored. Changing the default to skipping the stuff unless it's requested would be the best for New Yorkers, terrestrial and marine. Thank you again for holding this hearing today.
Thank you. The next panel will be in person. It will be Lisa Solomon, Debbie Lee Cohen, Alexander Morgan, and Larissa TV2. The first two panelists can take seats at the table.
I want to take a moment to recognize Councilmember Krishnan.
It's at least two more in-person panels. Three more in-person panels and potentially two more virtual, I think.
Thank you to Chair Velazquez and all of the members of this committee for scheduling this hearing. My name is Lisa Solomon, and I am representing the New York City chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider Foundation is a national group that protects our oceans and coast for all people. people. Surf Rider Foundation has been running the Reusable New York City Coalition for three years now, which is a group of forty local New York City organizations that are supporting Bill Intro 0559, the Skip the Stuff bill. The New York City chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation does a lot of beach cleanups, mostly in the Rockaways, and the items addressed in the bill are always some of the most commonly found. For example, we've held seventeen beach cleanups in 2022 with about twenty-five people per cleanup, and in total, we found one thousand and forty-two plastic straws and stirs, two-hundred-and-seventy plastic utensils, six hundred napkins, and sixteen hundred plastic wrappers. And some of that portion of the sixteen hundred is condiment packets. So clearly, plastic pollution has saturated our environment, our communities, and now our bodies. This bill will reduce plastic pollution, save restaurants money, and as a New Yorker who orders takeout food, will finally honor my choice to not receive plastic items that I don't need to enjoy my meal. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Velazquez and councilmembers, and thank you so much for giving our students the opportunity to testify and, you know, allowing the time for them early on so they could actually do it. It'll change their lives, and that's the way to teach civics, so appreciate that. I'm Debbie Lee Cohen. I'm the executive director and founder of Cafeteria Culture, an environmental education organization, and I'm also the co-director and producer of Cafeteria Culture's documentary Microplastic Madness, which features fifth graders from PS-15 in Red Hook, Brooklyn. Cafeteria Culture is totally in support of Intro 0559 Skip the Stuff bill. We urgently need to reduce unnecessary or nonessential plastic packaging and foodware to address the massive global plastic pollution problem. It's not just an environmental emergency, it's also a health emergency. And I can speak of that firsthand. I was formerly a scenic designer, working with plastics, mixing compounds, cutting plastics with power tools. I am now a stage-four cancer patient, and I believe that my cancer has everything to do with being exposed to plastics on that level at a young age. And so, I just want to say that at this moment in time, we have an incredible opportunity because our students have pressed for Plastic Free Lunch Day citywide. And now, New York City Department of Ed has agreed to Plastic Free Lunch Day on a monthly basis, will continue to advocate with our students to make that more regular. But one of the low-hanging fruit parts of Plastic Free Lunch Day, thanks to our students at PS-188 who testified, is that they push the school food directors to publicize "don't need, don't take." We have this opportunity to make it a societal, a whole, like, not just behavior for adults, but that students can go home and talk to their parents, and it can expand from schools to home to business, that we understand, like, we're not doing these plastic reduction initiatives in silos, that we culturally reach out to the whole community. So it's a great opportunity right now to get this bill passed. And I just want to say, the Skip the Stuff bill, it provides an immediate and repeatable way for New Yorkers to say no to plastic pollution and no to the plastic health threats. And I encourage you to read more about plastic health threats in my testimony. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for supporting the bill.
Thank you.
My name is Alexander Morgan. I founded Ecorate, which is a sustainability ratings platform for cafes and refill stores throughout the country, but especially in New York City. And I would really like to commend the council for introducing the, you know, for taking on this bill in the form that it has, because in my experience of assessing the sustainability of, you know, hundreds of cafes around the city, really what matters most is the default procedure. So it's not just that there is a sustainable option hypothetically available, but really, the vast majority of people are just going to go with the default. So making this the default is absolutely the right way to go, so I commend you on that. And in my conversations about sustainability with, you know, tons of New Yorkers all over the city, this, specifically this issue of the Skip the Stuff bill, these, you know, extra cutlery and condiments and things in food, especially delivery, is really just a point that people just don't understand why it's the case and why it continues. And so, this is really something that the city needs to act on, on a citywide level to change the defaults completely. And the last thing I'll say is that it's not just the plastic cutlery that's, you know, at play here, it's really, you know, all the people that I've talked to about this see it as the obvious, sort of like, no-brainer solution. So it's really the city's credibility to address, you know, to effectively address sustainability issues that's on the line. So we really need to get this passed in order to be able to address, you know, larger sustainability issues and for the city to be able to reach its 2030 goal of being a zero-waste city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Larissa TV2, and I'm the owner and founder of Maison Jar, a refillery and low-waste grocery store in Greenpoint, Brooklyn, District 33. So Maison Jar is a package-free grocery store. We basically sell food products, home and personal care essentials, all without unnecessary packaging, and we encourage customers to bring in their own reusable containers. I believe my business has been a great case study for the willingness of New Yorkers to change their habits for the benefit of the environment. When most customers first visit my store, they have never shopped at a package-free grocery store before. I receive questions about how the process works, what to do if you haven't brought your own containers, and from time to time, why all of this is even necessary. The team at the store and myself explain to the customers the issue with single-use plastic and containers, and will help them with their shopping process. Today, I wanted to share that our business is thriving. Many customers that never shopped in reusable containers before have happily embraced the change, and now even push their neighbors and family to do the same. I am supportive of Intro 0559 Skip the Stuff bill because I believe that it is a necessary step to improve the impact New Yorkers have, the impact New Yorkers make on the environment, not only for the people of this great city, but for the global community we are part of. Most of all, I am supportive of the bill because I know that New Yorkers are ready to be part of the necessary change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next panelists will be virtual. I will start by calling Galit Sadek, then Sandy Rens, and then Sarah Grillo. I'm sorry. I'll try, I'll say that again. Our next panelists will be virtual. I will start by calling Galit Sadek, then Sandy Rens, and then Sarah Grillo. Galit Sadek, you may begin when the sergeant starts your time.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Galit Sadek, and I'm the owner of Sadek G. Management. I'm located in District 31. I am also on the board of a nonprofit called The Diversity Initiative, and one of the things that we work on is beach cleanups with that nonprofit. So my full-time business is a bookkeeping business, and I see a lot of my clients wasting money on purchasing these plastic products that ultimately do not get used. So on a business standpoint, I want to make sure that my businesses are able to save the money and not waste it on things that people are not using, shoving into a drawer as soon as they get home, as well as when we do our beach cleanups on the nonprofit side, I, this is one of the things that we encounter all of the time. And we do beach cleanups in Rockaway Beach. We do them both underwater. We're certified scuba divers. We do them both underwater and onshore, and we see them in both places. New York depends on clean waterways and coastlines to support four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand American jobs and forty-seven-point-nine billion in GDP in our coastal tourism, fishing, and recreation industries. All of that is put at risk by the staggering amount of plastic that's entering our oceans and our waterways. Some of the key findings among registered New York voters surveyed by Oceana in 2021 include that eighty-eight percent are concerned about single-use plastic products, eighty-four percent are concerned about plastic pollution and its impact on the environment and our ocean, eighty-three percent are concerned about the amount of plastic items used in food delivery and takeout. That's huge. Eighty-eight percent support local and state policies to reduce single-use plastic. Thank you for listening.
The next panelist is Sandy Rens.
Sandy. Okay. Okay, my name is Sandy Rens, and I live in District 39. I applaud Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez's opening words and all of the testimony in favor of this bill. I am urging this committee to pass Intro 0559. Most of the single-use plastic distributed by restaurants for eat-in, take-out, and delivery is not recyclable, and a lot of it goes into the landfill without being used at all, because when tables are cleaned or takeout bags thrown away, used and unused just goes in the same place. It's not separated, and it doesn't matter. It's a small distinction because all plastic is poison. Everyone needs to get into the habit of zero plastic use, and this bill is a very user-friendly start for this practice. This bill will reduce plastic use, yet for those customers that still need to ease into a plastic-free life, they get that choice. It's a very gentle bill. Please pass Intro 0559, and then let's get serious. Thank you.
Thank you. The next panelist is Sarah Grillo.
Time starts.
Hello, my name is Sarah Grillo, and I'm a mother of four kids. I live in District 6 in Washington Heights, and I'm here because in the summer, I go up to Orchard Beach in Pelham in the Bronx, and I can't help but pick up all of the utensils and the plastics, even the napkins that are littering the shoreline, because my kids can't even swim in the ocean without constantly encountering these items. And so, I make it a thing where my kids and I go, and we pick up all the trash from the water and from the beach, and then, three hours later, when we go to leave, there's, it's just replenished, that there's, the items have just returned back in full number as they were before. So I'm here to just say that I applaud the Skip the Stuff bill. I think we need a cultural change. I think we need to force this idea onto society, because people will literally see us walking around picking up the trash as they're depositing it in the sand. And until the law takes effect, there, we can't just, we can't just rely on people doing the right thing because they won't. There needs to be a cultural shift in the way that New Yorkers and across this country regard plastics. That's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm actually the representative of Orchard Beach, so I appreciate your help. There are several organizations there as well that do do beach cleaning, so I advise you if you want to join us. City Island Oyster Reef Project is one of them, so join us one of these days, and thank you, thank you for your words. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. The next panel will be in person. It will be Sandra Noonan, Madeleine McGilory, Sheila McMenamin, and Delia Kulikundis.
My name is Sandra Noonan. I'm here as Chief Sustainability Officer of the restaurant chain Just Salad, which is headquartered and was founded in New York City. We operate across six U.S. states nationally. I'm also here as an outraged citizen. I am tired of the needless plastic waste in my delivery orders, and in fact, joined Just Salad years ago out of a passion for its commitment to waste reduction. I'm here to support Skip the Stuff, therefore, as a representative of the restaurant industry in New York City and as a citizen. And I can tell you that this bill would work because Just Salad is already taking this action on its own delivery platforms. The mechanism is very simple. We opt the customer out of utensils when they order on our website and on our app, and if they want a utensil, they can say, yes, I want a utensil. It's really that simple. So I also just want to add why this bill is so necessary. While we have done it ourselves, it is necessary because, for many reasons, but I'll just highlight a few. In our research, we have learned that indeed, plastic utensils are not recycled, and we have spoken directly with recycling facilities to confirm this as a restaurant chain. Even if we use compostable utensils that are made of bioplastics, the situation is the same. They will not be composted by most or any compost facilities, and we have independently verified this. I just want to conclude by saying, I don't remember when society decided that it was acceptable to get aside of trash with your food. We have moved way too far from common sense in this scenario, and no one's benefiting. Restaurants aren't benefiting, and the consumer's not benefiting. So please help us pass this bill. It's common sense, it will eliminate a nuisance, and it will help our planet. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Velazquez and committee members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to be heard. My name is Madeline McGilroy, and I'm a New Yorker born and raised. I have also researched, studied, and educated on microplastics around the globe, from the Galapagos to the Arctic, for the last eight years. I'm an ambassador of the Five Gyres Institute, a prominent microplastics research and educational organization, and I'm also the Climate and Plastics Campaign Coordinator at Seeding Sovereignty, an environmental justice organization, where I focus on the critical connection between plastics and the climate crisis. But above all, I'm a New Yorker who gets takeout and, like most of us, has this pile of totally unnecessary plastic utensils sitting in their home. I'm testifying for this bill for the second time, exactly a year after the first hearing, which was my first-ever testimony. So the reasons I'm, of the passing of this bill are seemingly endless. Plastic utensils are obviously, as we've discussed, not recyclable, and since most takeout is delivered to homes and workplaces, where consumers have plenty of silverware and, in fact, prefer eating with silverware, these utensils go directly from the oil well to production, to restaurants, to customers' homes, and just into the trash, without really ever being touched. So they burden the city by sitting in landfill, they break down into microplastic particles that harm our health and our environment. So this bill, obviously, is really such a win-win-win, and I know that myself and probably millions of New Yorkers will let out a big sigh of relief if it passes. Delivery, as we all know, is very convenient, but what to do with these utensils is extremely inconvenient. So for me and many others, the guilt is very real. As both a scientist and a New Yorker, I know that these local legislative measures are really the first step in moving towards a sustainable future and showcasing our city as a global leader, so this one couldn't be easier. So let's skip the stuff. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Sheila McMenamin. Thank you for having us here today. I formerly have been an employee of the NYC Parks Department and worked within public parks in New York for many years, currently working in solar, but the sustainability issue at hand is really pressing, not just to me, not just to the wildlife of New York City, but to the people as well. I have firsthand experience understanding the sheer amount of waste that just gets left in our public parks here in New York City, let alone waste created from ordering takeout and within our home, and it is pretty inescapable. And so, on behalf of the city residents and the wildlife here, this is really low-hanging fruit, if even to just set precedent for what the future of New York City's sustainability initiatives can look like. And, you know, having worked in parks, a lot of that work is just around building awareness of existing green spaces or lack thereof. This is another way in which we can start to build awareness for the public about the prevalence and dominance that plastic has taken on our everyday habits like eating food, and where we can start to chip away at the pervasiveness of plastics that can only create unbound potential for making this more of a waste-free city. So, thank you. that can only, um, create unbound potential for, um, making this more of a waste-free city. So, thank you.
Okay, good morning. My name is Delia Kulakundis and I'm here speaking on my own behalf. When I try to explain this bill to people who don't already know about it, I tell them it would require restaurants to give customers only the things that they asked for. What could be easier than that? So I thank you, Chair Velazquez, for holding this hearing and for your leadership on this issue and for the rest of this committee as well. Any arguments you may hear against this bill do not make sense. But once you realize that the plastic industry is actually just a part of the fossil fuel industry, it makes a lot more sense what they're, where they're coming from. The fossil fuel industry tried to shift the blame for the climate crisis onto regular people and telling us it's our carbon footprints that are the problem. In the same way, the plastic industry tried to shift blame for the ocean crisis onto consumers for blaming us for demanding plastic, telling us it's our fault for not reducing, reusing, and recycling. Uh, the plastic industry has always known that their products accumulate in the oceans and poison marine life. But instead of modifying those products to be less toxic and more recyclable, they just blamed consumers and municipalities for not recycling enough. Meanwhile, they deliberately undermine the reusable items in favor of plastic disposable ones just to boost their business. So right now, we know that fossil fuels are on their, on their way out. And the industry is looking for ways to boost their business again and plastics are what they're turning to. We've seen this play out before, these arguments. The plastic industry tired, they tried to lobby their way out of the plastic bag ban in New York State. It didn't work. We finally prevailed. We're working on it. Um, but they just tried to delay and confuse and distract people. Just, we're not buying it anymore. We weren't buying it in the first place, but we're still not buying it. Um, we just don't want to get disposable stuff that we didn't ask for in the first place. Disrupt the narrative of like, it's our demand. We're not demanding it. We're demanding no plastic. So I'm asking you, pass this bill. Get it done before the end of the year. Voters have your back. We passed the Environmental Bond Act by an eighty percent landslide in New York City. We're ready for climate action. Voters have your back. It's an easy win and we want to cheer you on. Thank you.
Thank you. The next panel will be in person will be Candy Kane, Kaylee Kunkel, Sarah Mercer Malakoff, and Lauren Sweeney. Candy Kane, you may begin when the time starts.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. Chairman Velquez, my name is Candy Kane and I'm a member of Three Fifty NYC. I'm testifying here today in support of INT Zero Fifty-nine. The Skip the Stuff bill sponsored by Councilperson Marjorie Velazquez and others. As there are myriad of good reasons for New York City to pass the bill, I barely know where to start. But I will start by mentioning the Skip the Stuff bill that was passed by the Los Angeles City Council unanimously in June of two thousand and twenty-one. So my real question here today is, what is the New York City Council waiting for? Ever since COVID-nineteen spread across our city, trash on the streets has become a major problem. The Skip the Stuff bill would be obviously helped to mitigate that issue alone. Who does not have a drawer full of miscellaneous napkins and cheap plastics that will never be used but has to be dumped out every now and again in order for precious space to be regained? These items are not even single-use. They're never used. The Skip the Stuff bill is a great idea that's begging, begging to be enacted. I could go, I could go on, but you get my drift. Please pass the Skip the Stuff bill now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Kunkel and I'm a resident of Jackson Heights, Queens. When I founded my eco-friendly storefront in two thousand and twenty, it was because I knew the plastic pollution crisis was too big to ignore. Since then, our plastic-free message has reached and resonated with tens of thousands of Queens residents and New Yorkers beyond. They show up week after week to purchase reusable utensils, green alternatives to single-use household plastics, and they refill their containers with household essentials. And they ask me daily about how they can reduce their footprint as consumers. As you can see, this movement is strong, but we still need your support. Intro Zero Five Five Nine, the Skip the Stuff bill, would be a critical first step in eliminating single-use plastics from our food system, our waterways, and our city, uh, waste. Our power is immense when combined, but too often, well-intentioned businesses don't listen when we ask for less stuff. This bill would put teeth behind the goal of zero waste and also free up city utilities and resources for greener initiatives. As a green, local, small-business owner, I see daily the innovations that already exist to fill the void of plasticware. This change is locally and diversely led, as you can see, with environmental justice at its forefront. Our movement already has reusables, refill stations, circular electric van delivery services, and most importantly, passionate consumers who are ready for this change. Please help us make this a reality for our city and for our planet. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Just wanted to say, as your council member, thank you very much for your testimony and all the great work that you're doing for our climate. Look forward to working together.
Hi, my name is Mercer Malakoff. I work for Package Free Shop, which is a New Yorker-founded zero-waste brand with a brick-and-mortar store located in District One. We provide the most sustainable versions of the products that everyone uses daily. Our products use zero or minimal packaging, eliminating single-use plastic from everyday routines. The reason why businesses like ours exist is because New Yorkers want a more sustainable lifestyle. In fact, almost ninety percent of New Yorkers support local and state policies to reduce single-use plastic. And eighty-four percent are specifically concerned about plastics' impact on the ocean and the environment. The Skip the Stuff bill would dramatically lower, would dramatically lower our use of plastic for packaging, which makes up almost half of all plastic produced today. At Package Free, we prove every day that not only is this a more sustainable model possible, it's a smart business. For the good of our planet and New York, we hope that you vote yes on Intro Zero Five Five Nine.
Excuse me. Hello, my name is Lauren Sweeney, co-founder and CEO at Deliver Zero. Thank you, Chair Velazquez, for, and the members of the committee for allowing me the opportunity to testify on this legislation. My company's mission is to make it easier for customers and restaurants to make truly environmentally friendly decisions that reduce waste in landfills, greenhouse gas emissions, uh, in our atmosphere and pollutions on our streets. Single-use plastic is a climate issue and it's time we do something about it. I strongly support this bill because it has become clear that the scourge of single-use items, such as eating utensils and napkins, as outlined in this bill, has become unnecessary and unsustainable. Our single, our city uses over twenty-three billion disposable food service items per year, thirty-six million pounds of which is single-use foodware that is collected in our city's residential waste stream. But plastic must be seen as a climate issue, not just a trash issue. Most people agree that single-use plastic is bad for the environment and oceans, but what they don't realize is that plastic warms the planet twice as much as aviation. When it comes to food delivery, every billion takeout containers are equivalent to at least one thousand six hundred, si, one, one hundred thousand, six hundred, six thousand tons of greenhouse gas emissions. It's a lot. And at least three hundred fifty-seven million gallons of water consumption. And this plastic is costly on businesses and local government operations. According to Upstream, American food service establishments spend twenty-four billion each year purchasing nearly one trillion pieces of disposable foodware. This generates nearly nine million tons of waste, which costs businesses and local governments six billion dollars per year to manage. And I just want to echo everyone else's sentiments today, everyone else who said this, but it's just time to do more. This is a good step. Time to do more.
Thank you. Our next panel will also be in person. And that will be Rain Manley, Jan Thompson, and Carol Smolensky. If there's anyone here in person who would like to testify but who has not been called, please see the sergeant to fill out an appearance card.
Ready? Uh, so my name is Rain Manley. Um, I'm a resident of District Thirty-three. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Reusable NYC Coalition and I work for the Natural Resources Defense Council. What you see in this massive thirty-pound bag is the reason I joined the coalition a few years ago. Hundreds of single-use utensils that I personally tried to refuse. A day is coming incredibly soon where all of this is going to end up the only place it can, the trash and then to a landfill or incinerator right here in New York City. In two thousand and seventeen, the DSNY Waste Characterization Study analyzed a tiny fraction of the waste that we produce and they found five hundred and eighty-three tons of single-use plastic plates, cups, and utensils. That shows the magnitude of the single-waste nightmare that we're dealing with. I'm just one New Yorker, so I'm asking the committee to think about the millions of us who've got drawers that are filled with all this stuff that we didn't need and we didn't ask for. We order takeout to our homes where we already have reusable solutions. Beyond the residents, I'm asking the committee to think about our restaurants, who could be making meaningful savings every single year by stocking less of this unnecessary stuff? That money can make a huge difference for companies who are operating on razor-thin margins. Beyond the restaurants, I ask the committee to think about the city itself. Our streets, our parks, our rivers, our ocean, our wildlife, and all the single-use waste that's bound to pollute them if we don't divert it. Beyond our city, I ask the committee to think about our planet. Plastic production is a huge contributor to greenhouse gas emissions and our city must continue to invest in climate solutions as we've done with the plastic bag and straw bands. With all this in mind, the solution is simple and elegant. Skip the stuff. Don't give it to us unless we ask for it. Thank you to Committee Chair Velazquez for reintroducing this legislation, to the full committee for your full support and sponsorship of this bill, and to all the amazing advocates and activists who've pushed for this for years. Your commitment shows that you're trying to make the city the very, very best it can be. Thank you very much.
Good morning or good afternoon, I think it is now. My name is Jan Thompson. I'm the Communication Chair for Three Fifty Brooklyn's Plastic-Free Team. And, uh, I want to let you know that one of my biggest pet peeves is the waste I see in takeout dining. And like most of you, I am a busy person and do order takeout when I don't have time to cook. And I can't tell you how many kitchen drawers and refrigerator cubbies are stuffed with this kind of stuff. Uh, and instead of calling this single-use plastic, I call it zero-use plastic because I never use it and it gets dumped directly into the trash, causing me immense guilt. We can't afford to wait another minute, uh, to pass this. It's such an easy win for the environment. Single-use plastic is clogging our rivers and oceans like never before. My, microplastics are insidious and have even been found in human placentas, which is crazy. Plastic takes centuries to break down completely and not only that, the production of plastic leads to greenhouse gas emissions, as we've heard, which contribute to the climate crisis we now face. Um, lastly, I just want to add what you already know. This bill is so friendly and easy to pass. It's a win-win since restaurants will immediately save money by giving utensils and condiments only upon request. Purportedly, they can save as much as three thousand to twenty-one thousand per year as some businesses are reporting in Los Angeles where a similar law was passed. New York City has a mandate of zero waste to landfill by two thousand and thirty and this would help tremendously towards reaching that goal. And most citizens hate waste like me, uh, and usually have all of these items at home or work anyway. So there's literally nothing hard about this bill. It comes up roses everywhere you look. I will be so proud of New York City and its council when we pass Skip the Stuff. Thank you very much.
I'm going to take a moment to, um, recognize Councilmember Brewer.
Uh, so, good afternoon. My name is Carol Smolensky. Uh, I am not representing any organization. I am just a concerned citizen. So I have learned a lot here today. I really, this has been amazing. The reason I wanted to come and testify today is because I spent, um, the two, first two years of COVID, taking long walks. And I live in Park Slope, Brooklyn, and my walks took me to the industrial waterfront of Red Hook and Gowanus Canal. And as I'm walking around there, I am seeing mountains and mountains of trash because that's where New York City deals with a lot of its trash. So there is a sanitation transfer station with containers of trash being loaded onto barges and shipped away. Uh, there is a huge mountain, a, um, uh, metal sorter, scrap metal sorting plant that sorts metal and loads it onto barges and ships it somewhere. I walked past a warehouse filled from top to bottom and front to back with empty bottles and cans. And they were being put onto trucks and I don't know where it went. But all of that just made me amazed and I started ranting and raving to my friends about all of the trash that New York City produces and, oh my God, what are we going to do about this? And then I learned about this bill. And I thought I would just come and add my voice to the experts, because obviously I'm not, um, about the need for such a bill. And then there's a whole lot more to do beyond that, but I, I know you all are already working on that. So I'm just here to praise you and, um, thank you for, uh, putting this bill forward and I'm sure it will pass. I mean, obviously, right? Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for that energy.
Thank you. The final panel I will be calling will be virtual. If you are on, it would be Matt Gov, Nicole Zelig, and Rafael Santana Aguilar. If any of those people are, panelists are available, you may testify.
Time starts now.
Okay. Okay, those, those final three might not be on the Zoom. So if we've inadvertently missed anyone who has registered to testify today and has yet to be called, please speak with the sergeant or if you are with us remote, use the Zoom hand function and you will be called in the order that your hand has been raised. It appears those witnesses are not present. So I will now turn it over to Chair Velazquez to offer any closing remarks.
Just want to thank everyone for showing up early morning, uh, at the rally nine AM. A nice cold Monday for everyone, but more importantly, thank you for your advocacy. Thank you, Takes a Village, and thank you for being there from the beginning and let's get this done.